Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go. Perhaps you should lower it a little. Actually, I think... Someone on the phone will see if it's working on them. There you go.[585.11]
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I don't have the sentence.
Yeah, it does.
It's always weird.
So do I have anything to say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She says first.
Okay.
I'm just gonna go first like.
Okay.
I'm gonna go top of face, same one role.
I always get one of these. I know, you know.
He's called the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Dr. Osmond, Mr. Walsh, Mr. McCarron.
Present.
Mrs. Rivera.
Present.
Mrs. Barokas.
Present.
Mrs. Gardella.
Present.
Mrs. Cass.
Present.
There has been a change to the addendum, motion 11. We are adding the term after the word referendum, so it will read, "For planning of the upcoming referendum and/or facilities improvement project for Jackson School District not to exceed $130,000." I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron.
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas.
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella.
Yes.
Mrs. Cass.
Yes.
I now turn the meeting over to Mrs. Primili for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Cass. Well, good evening, everyone. Happy July. Hard to believe we're already well into July. The summers always go so fast. We were just saying the other day, we, you know, we always look forward to the summer, look forward to the summer, and then it just flies by. We keep busy in the district, that is for sure. In a few minutes, I'll give you a couple of updates on what we've been doing in July since we've closed the schools for the school year to the students and staff. But before I do that, I would like to invite Dr. Godleski up to the assistant superintendent to present the high school New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment scores and the access for multilingual learners' assessment scores to the board, and then we will move forward after that. So, Dr. Godleski, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Okay, give everyone a chance to spin around so they could see. This is our presentation, as Mrs. Primili just mentioned, our New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment, NJGPA. As well, later on in the presentation, I'll switch to our access scores, which is the annual test given to our multilingual learners. I'm not doing this on purpose for increased drama. Here we go. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Irwin. So, just as a little bit of an overview, GPA is, it's not a new assessment. It is a graduation requirement, and it's administered to all of our 11th grade students. It's designed to measure which students are graduation-ready, and I put that in quotation marks because it's not the only requirement for graduation, but it is the state's requirement as a testing requirement, as far as assessments go. And students have to show proficiency in both English Language Arts, usually referred to as ELA, as well as mathematics. They're reported separately for each of these content areas. It's given in the 11th grade, but the test is aligned to the 10th grade standards. For ELA and for mathematics, it's aligned to Algebra I and Geometry, which is, in a typical path, is a freshman and sophomore year of high school. The Board of Ed adopted level cut scores, and in the, over the past several years, up until this past graduating year, if you didn't make your cut score for NJGPA, there was an alternative pathway with a different assessment, cut scores from PSATs, SATs, ACTs, or the Accuplacer. These pathways have expired. I even just checked it a couple hours before this meeting because, looking for a new broadcast, but they, they haven't yet renewed these pathways. So, not, new directions have not been provided by the DOE at this time, and I say "at this time" because I, you know, it is possible that the state will allow those additional tests to be used as an alternate for proficiency. Students who take but don't meet the minimum required score do have an opportunity to retest their senior year, and they also have the opportunity to fulfill this requirement through the successful completion of a portfolio. So, let's just jump right into our outcomes. These are our English Language Arts scores. What I did was I did keep results for the past two years, because I always think it's good to compare from year to year, but I do want you to recognize and understand that these are different cohorts of students. When you look at a test that's given year to year, like the NJSLA, you can track a cohort of students. You can't track a cohort of students, but it's still informative for us to look at how our students do from year to year. The top is our district. The second line is our state, and then we have our high schools delineated there. So, and we included a change from the previous year as well. So, graduation-ready for 24-25 for our district was 80%, which was a percent less than the state, and 75% from Jackson Liberty and 84% at Jackson Memorial were deemed graduation-ready as per the cut scores on the GPA. Just leaving it up so you can take a look. Moving on to our mathematics outcomes, our district, 52% of our students were deemed graduation-ready from the NJGPA, and the state had 58%. The change from the previous year is 5% above where we were, actually, I should say 1% from where we were last year, and 3% for the state. Liberty had quite a boost from the students last year to the students this year, 14% increase, and Memorial High School went down by 7%. Again, it's, it's interesting data to look at, however, it is not the same cohort of students. It's also important to take a look at our results in subgroups. Making sure that we're addressing the achievement gap across subgroups is a really important part of data analysis and ensuring we're meeting the needs of all of our learners. So, this gives us a breakdown of how our subgroups have performed. If we have an N-size or a group of students that are 20 or less, we cannot report out on them, so a couple of subgroups are not reported because they'd be self-identifying in nature. So, this is our subgroups for literacy and our subgroups for mathematics. Again, just, this is the one time they take a test, so it's always good to have a growth mindset when looking at data. This is a, you know, a one-and-done kind of test. Looking at data, analyzing it, we need to have a response to the data, again, keeping a growth mindset at the forefront of our, our plans. We have used this year targeted assistance monies from a grant that the district received. It's going on right now, an intensive summer program to address students that are danger of not being deemed graduation-ready. So, they did not pass the NJGPA, they were invited to this summer program. It's going on now at Jackson Township High School. We actually saw them this morning when we were there for some meetings. This program was instituted last year. It was deemed successful because all the students that, that attended completed a pathway enabling high school graduation, whether that was a passing GPA score or a successful portfolio towards graduation. There's also a fall semester course to support students in danger of not being deemed graduation-ready, which, it's not really just about the test, it's about being proficient in 9th and 10th grade standards. We're also in our second year of implementation of new mathematics resources, 6 to 12, as well as ELA resources in K to 6. These are really robust programs and resources. They're rigorous. They offer lots of differentiation models for our teachers to utilize with their students, and they're highly engaging. Our middle school math is Ed Gems. Our high school for Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II is Savis and Visions, and HMH into Reading for K to 6. K to 6 isn't tested on the GPA, but when you have someone who's not meeting proficiency at 9th and 10th grade, you have to look at, at the years prior to that to see where some of these standards may have been missed, and therefore, you see an issue later on. We're also planning an implementation for our 9th and 10th grade ELA classes at the high school level, Savis My Perspectives, and that's in the works now, hopefully to have a Semester Two implementation. We're going to continue to use Linkit benchmarks for mathematics and ELA. They're really important standard-based assessments that our students take, so practitioners, teachers can use this data to tailor their instruction, provide targeted assistance within the classroom to fulfill any gaps in learning, as well as grow students who are even achieving proficiency towards advanced proficient. The use of professional learning communities, this is a community of teachers that work together to analyze student data, to collaboratively work on instructional strategies that meet the needs of our students where they most need it. Use of individual student data from triangulated sources. We have the NJSLA results, we have Linkit results, iExcel results, and local assessments to identify bubble students. Bubble students are students that are very, very close to passing or being proficient, and when we looked at our data, 18% of our students were within five points or fewer of passing or being deemed proficient in math, and 10% of our ELA students were within five points of being deemed graduation-ready in ELA. Understanding where students are and, and targeting areas for proficiency really can make a big difference in these high-stakes assessments. And of course, continuing with a plan for professional development to support growth for instructors, to increase their pedagogy that results in increased student achievement. Next steps. Student scores are in Genesis, so if you're a parent and you're watching this here or at home, you can go to Genesis and see the overall score in the Assessment tab. You can also look at an individualized student report that's quite detailed, again, in the Genesis Parent Portal under the Documents tab. Students who did not qualify as graduation-ready will have opportunities for additional assessments or pathways to fulfilling the graduation requirement, some of which were mentioned in the response to data. Okay, I'm gonna flow right into our reporting of our ACCESS test. So, ACCESS is an acronym for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State to State. So, this test is given in the wintertime to all of our multilingual learners in grades K through 12. So, if you're identified as a multilingual learner, previously known as an L, ELL, you're given the ACCESS test. It's given every year, and it's to monitor students' growth in learning academic English. Scores range from a Level 1, which is entering, to a Level 6, which is reaching, and they're all based in the WIDA English Language Development Standards. WIDA is from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. It's a platform that provides tools and support that really help teachers meet the needs of students whose, whose language, native language, is not English, help them to be successful in their academic needs. It has four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and this data is really important for teachers to look at, along with the other resources, to understand what students should be able to accomplish academically at each of these levels of proficiency in gaining the academic, academic English acquisition. Even though they're tested in four domains, students receive a composite score comprised of oral language, which is speaking, literacy, reading and writing combined, and comprehension, listening comprehension. Students are rated as entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. That's the, that 1 to 6 that I spoke about. Again, it's really important to not compare across domains or grade levels, because the rigor of the test increases as the students get into higher grades, so we have to consider this. We also have to consider the fact that someone might have oral proficiency in English in three to five years of exposure and integration, but academic English proficiency takes a bit longer, four to seven years, to be able to be successful in school. Looking at this data, it doesn't really behoove us to necessarily look from year to year because there's different cohorts of students taking this test. Once a student is deemed proficient in English based on the ACCESS test, and that's a score of 4.5 and above, they then exit the program. Once they exit the program, they don't take the ACCESS test again. So, whereas other state assessments, all of the students take them all the time, year to year, this test, once you gain proficiency, you're no longer in the program and you're no longer tested. So, this is really just a percentage of our students across grade levels at each of the WIDA levels. And the bottom row gives you students tested at each grade level. And while it makes sense that there's more students who are multilingual learners in the early grades, because you exit out when you reach four to seven years within the program, you can kind of see that trend extend, but you should also consider that it's a, it's a transient population, and students who are multilingual learners sometimes have gaps in education that also make it difficult to do really well on this test within the first few years. Again, looking at this data, as long, along with other data points for these students, allows us the opportunity to continue to respond to the growing number of multilingual learners in our schools, updating curricular resources that provide bilingual support. I mentioned in the first part of the presentation, new resources our teachers have. These resources have lots of supports for teachers to implement with students whose English is not their primary or native language. Creating responsive curriculum documents to target instruction for our students, providing professional development to better support multilingual learners, to explore options to provide bilingual educational opportunities for our students. We have parent liaisons in each building, and we are maintaining those. They're incredibly helpful to our school district in having a strong homeschool connection, and it really, they're amazing. I've never heard anyone say anything except for incredibly positive things about the benefits the parent liaisons bring to our school district, because it really helps everyone feel a sense of belonging, and that line of a sense of belonging, providing parent engagement opportunities, that also strengthen the homeschool connection. And that is the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
I had two.
Okay.
So, on the second presentation.
Yeah.
The students that scored four and above, will they exit out?
They will. 4.5.
How will you know, like, based on that? You guys know if it's 4.5? Because it didn't have, like, 4.5 on there.
Yeah, we know.
Okay.
There's also, to add to that, there's also mid-year exits based on other criteria, multiple measures that we use within the school district.
So, one of those four scores could potentially exit mid-year?
Correct.
Okay. My other question was for the GPA, specifically to mathematics. I know that their district offers like a full-year Algebra I, and then there's a half-year kind of concepts class for Algebra II. Is there any consideration of making that Algebra I a Concepts, you know, one semester? Maybe there would be more...
Retention.
That, or I don't know, like, how many students participate in a full-year course? You know, it seems like a lot of math to go 90 minutes. You know, as a parent, I would probably decline it.
It's something that we can consider. I also think we also, we have to look at, we have to look at the data closely when they merge. We had a lot of staff turnover in our mathematics department, a lot of retirements of incredibly seasoned teachers, so we have to give people a chance to, to, you know, learn the craft. And it was our first year of adoption into the Savis program last year. Typically, when you're in your first year of adoption, you look at data, drop a little bit, and then gain something, so I'd like to give it a little bit of time to see where we are. That's just a one-time snapshot of where our kids are. I think it's a much better tell of how our kids are doing when we're looking at our Linkit assessments and our Savis assessments to see if we're seeing growth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're good? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Godleski.
So, just a very few quick updates from me today. We have really done an incredible job here, working through our custodians, Mr. Bruno, our, you know, just everybody at the grounds department, the maintenance department, our school administrators, our leadership in the tech, and our tech team, Mr. Beginsky, the assistant superintendents, and everybody have really just worked so incredibly hard to ensure that we are ahead of the game of our timeline for all of the moves for the restructuring plan. We have had tremendous amount of moves, and everything is in the right buildings now, and now, schools are being cleaned, and as classrooms are being cleaned, and spaces are being cleaned, the materials that are supposed to be in that classroom are being moved or into that space being moved. So, really, kudos to everybody. What an incredible task just to coordinate all of this. So, really impressed with, with, with our folks here. So, we're gonna be well ready for September to receive our students and our staff back, so more to come on that. The last few days, been working with the school administrative teams, our entire administrative team over at the high school. We do an administrative week every summer where we come together, and we goal-set, we train, we look at data, we look at ways that we can continually improve ourselves, and obviously, this year specifically, really looking at how we are taking our staff and our students and merging them successfully. So, we had a lot of topics that we've covered over the last few days with the team, as I said, goal-setting, vision-setting, you'll hear some of that in upcoming meetings. We've done some analysis of data, we've, we received an update from the business office of where we are with things, talked about PLCs, our professional learning communities for the year. We had some gang awareness training, a three-hour HIB training, evaluation training, and we have done a lot of school-level articulation that will continue into tomorrow at grade levels. So, lots of things happening here in the district, preparing us for September's opening. We'll continue to update you on all of that in the next meeting, and you'll hear more about our goals and our vision planning. Just a couple of quick things that Ms. Irwin put up on the screen today, just as reminders. Anybody who's interested in purchasing a USB drive or DVD of the high school graduation and eighth-grade promotion ceremonies, you can do so and pick it up immediately, follow the link that's on the screen there, and you'll be able to pick those up if you're still looking for that. And then, we have, just a reminder, childcare registration is open for September. Please make sure that if you plan on using childcare, that you get those forms in right away as we do fill out. away as we do fill out very quickly. So just a friendly reminder over there. And with that, I conclude my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Now I turn the meeting over to Dr. Savio for his report.
Thank you, Madam President. You'll see on the agenda going forward that there has to be a state monitor report every month of the board meeting. It is required in statute that I report to the board and the public at meetings. So I started in the district on May 20th, replacing the former monitor Carol Morris. First thing I did was review the 23-24 audit, and all the questions that I had about that were answered by the staff. The next thing I did was review the 25-26 approved budget, line by line, and I had about four pages of questions for Dan and his staff, and everything was answered very fully and completely. Routinely, the approval and review of all the purchase orders occurs, so I do that on a daily basis. At this time of the year, we're closing out the 24-25 school year. There are still some purchase orders that have been sitting on desks that are coming through at the last minute, so we're reviewing those and approving those to get them paid. And then the new ones are coming in fast and furious for the 25-26 school year, as you can imagine, all the supplies that need to be ordered. Paying particular attention to cash flow was a big deal with Carol, and it was a big deal with me because we had to make sure the district was solvent, able to pay all the bills by the close of the fiscal year, and that did happen. So we were fine with the sufficient funds to complete the fiscal year. Some of the major issues that I had to deal with are the sale of Rosenhour School and the back-and-forth with the closing dates and whether we were going to be able to close in time to pay off the state loan. But that did occur in June, which was great. Non-public transportation and the LSTA and non-public state aid was a big issue over the last two months since I've been here. Luckily, we are back with the LSTA for 25-26, and things are running smoothly with them. I dealt with some insurance issues with the joint insurance fund, joining the, dealing with the liability issues, the fact that our exposures are much more limited now than they've been in past years, but our insurance rates didn't go down. We were assured by the JIF that they will be looking at that over the summer and get back to us on an adjustment to our current-year dues. Insurance payments are under scrutiny by the Finance Committee of the JIF, which was good news. I also recommended that Dan and his staff look into a health insurance fund, since we're self-funded right now. The health insurance fund is similar to a JIF, where the groups get together and their rates are pretty steady year to year. You don't see the fluctuations like you see with the state health benefits program. One year going up 3%, going down to zero, going up 22%, and the recommendation is over 20% again for next year under the state health benefits program. So it's not a good time to join them, but looking into a health insurance fund would be a good way to make sure that we're getting good rates and good coverage for our staff. I was involved with the borrowing and loan repayments, the $6 million that was borrowed in 23-24 to balance the budget. You're paying that off at $600,000 per year, over 10 years, and that's what triggered me. That's what triggered the state monitor, actually Carol, starting here. So in order to release the state monitor, the district has to repay that debt, as well as assure the Commissioner of Education that you'll be solvent going forward, that there's not an issue with plugs in the budget, that you're going to need to borrow money from the state again in some future year. So that's the way to get out of having a monitor watch you every day. $10 million that was borrowed in 24-25 in anticipation of collecting that money from the sale of Rosenhour. That money did come from the state, and we were able to make sure that we had enough money for the close of the school year by having that money in the bank. The Rosenhour money is now available to pay back that loan, but we've been granted a little extra time to pay that back. We don't have to pay it back immediately. We have until the end of the fiscal year to pay that back, which was good news. So we have coverage just in case the next sale of a school is delayed in any way, going beyond the fiscal year. Our $2.9 million bridge loan, that's the final June state aid payment. That doesn't come in June, it actually comes in July. That did come in in July, and we were able to pay that money back to the state as soon as we got the closeout of the 24-25 fiscal year with those funds. So we've already received the delayed state aid payment and paid back that loan. As far as utilities are concerned, we are looking at a local government energy audit. You'll see that approval on the agenda. That's basically a free service by the Department of Energy in New Jersey, where they have the Smart Start program and they have the several programs that are available to us. And the analysis or the audit that comes through gives us ideas on what we can do to improve electricity and gas usage even further than you've already done. You have a very substantial ESIP in place now, where you took advantage of this in 2018. Now we can look at it again. Again, a free service, doesn't cost us anything. Maybe they won't come up with much that is worth doing, but there are very different programs. We're paying into that societal fund, societal improvement fund, I think it's called. And that society charge that's paid on everybody's bill every month, we're going to get the benefit of doing this audit and getting some of that money back for ourselves. Also, supply contracts. We're looking at the supply of electricity and the supply of gas, which are unregulated in the state of New Jersey. You can go out from the local utility and not have to be stuck with their supply prices. You can fix the price for electricity and gas supply over six months, a year, up to three or four years. So we're looking at that option as well. I got involved in a new grant that they just offered, a water infrastructure grant, and this is a great opportunity to look back to 2016 and beyond on what, any water improvements that you've made based on the lead-based piping that you've had, and any water fountains that were closed down as a result of lead being discovered and replacing them with those water filler bottles or new bubblers. We can go get reimbursement for that back to 2016. And you'll know that we spent over half a million dollars on the Getz Water Project. That might be a great one to add to this grant, application, to try and get reimbursement for that as well. So I'm working with the finance people on that. And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
That was excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Standing committee reports, Buildings and Grounds, Mr. McCarron.
Yes, Buildings and Grounds met. We went over some of the current project updates for trailer site remediation at Switlick, removal, trailer removal at Getz, the Getz flooring project, Getz office conversion, Room 500. Bus radio and repeater project, we've got an update on HVAC rooftop units at Liberty, and insulation of outside walk-in refrigerator at Liberty. Some current capital improvement projects, district-wide, JTMS, preschool annex, upgraded all pre-K outlets. Elm's Room 219 installed new compressor. Johnson Room 401 replaced blower motor. JTHS, Jim RTU 1 and 2 replaced all compressors. Jackson Township 56, school RTU 3, repaired flow switch. JTMS weight room repaired roof leak. JTMS walk-in refrigerator replaced Freon and repaired leak. Also, at our meeting, we did an update of long-range facility plan for closure of McAuliffe, and also some information was received in regards to a possible bond referendum of facilities and master planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or anything?
There weren't any other committees except ad hoc committee, which is policy, and I am the chairperson. We met on July 8th. It was Dr. Godleski, myself, Mrs. Barokas, Mr. McCarron, and Mrs. Formelli. We reviewed and discussed Regulation 9191, which is the fundraising policy, so there's some things that we're tweaking and reviewing. Policy 3283, electronic communications between teaching staff and students, there was a discussion but no changes. The same with Policy 5200, which is attendance, there was a discussion and no change. The eligibility of resident, non-resident students, which is mandated, is being revised. There's a discussion for tuition for all out of district. This revision is based on the Strauss ESME recommendations and the new change in the law from the state. Policy 5530, substance abuse, the revision for offenses. So we changed out-of-school to in-school suspension. So the first offense now will be four days of in-school suspension, social probation of 14 days. The second offense is two days of out-of-school suspension with two days in-school suspension, probation 30 days. And the third offense is now five days out-of-school suspension, five days in-school suspension with a probation of nine weeks. And the discussion about that is basically it's better to really be in school and to monitor the children than to just be sent home and plus instruction. And that concludes that report.
Nothing to report?
There were no other ad hoc committees. Tower, you don't have anything, right? Mrs. Rivera? I need a motion for approval of regulation adoption.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the closed session meeting, June 25th, 2025, and the official board meeting, June 25th, 2025, business meeting.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Financial reports. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. I just want to check some, okay. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to open the public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second. Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard.
Christine McGinley. I have a question about your report. Is that, that's an agenda item, right? So, it seems so. How long has the district been using the Linkit? How long has that been in use? Because I hear it often. I hear my kids talk about it often, and I get how it can monitor progress. But my, you know, kind of old-school education person is like, does that mean they're on the computer so much, on the Chromebook so much, that we might be missing maybe some more valuable direct instruction? And then also, I was curious if we knew how long the Linkit system was being used? Can we do a comparison to how scores have either improved on the state level or on these official tests? And I know, when I was an educator, I didn't put much weight onto all those because it was one day and it was a lot of pressure. But I still would like to see a little bit more growth on these state testing assessments. So I was just curious about the Linkit, because I hear that a lot, and if that is the main tool for monitoring progress. I was curious about how many years and how it compares to state assessments. Thank you.
Are there any additional agenda-only questions? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I'm going to Ms. McGinley. We've been using Linkit for a while, but there's many different aspects of Linkit. Not only are there some assessments that our students take and benchmark assessments, but it's also a data warehousing system. So for any assessments that we have, it allows the teachers to be able to see a comprehensive view of students and their data across the board for all sorts of assessments. But I am going to turn it over to Mr. Rotante and Dr. Godleski to give you a little bit more details.
Yeah, that's important to note. It's a tool for teachers and it's also a tool as a platform for assessment. But the kids aren't, it's not like an IXL with the lessons and kids are on it all the time. They just take their benchmark, and we have actually sat with the administrators this week to ensure that we're not over-testing and we're just testing just enough so that we're not losing that valuable time that you discussed. And as far as how well it aligns to the state assessment, it actually correlates quite closely to how students will do on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment to their Linkit benchmark. Of all the assessments I've worked with, it's the closest in correlation, those two. As far as the presentation tonight, just keep in mind that I, that one does not show growth because it's a different cohort of students each year taking it. The GPA is only given to 11th graders, so to really show growth, I'd need a 10th grade to an 11th grade. So when we do the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, you'll be able to see one cohort grow from, well, hopefully grow from grade level to grade level, but we'll be able to look at the results that way. This one, it's a different group each year. I do want to see a higher proficiency rate overall, so in growth in those terms, absolutely. But it's not individual student growth that we could really measure with that, so.
I need a motion to move Finance.
Motion.
Second.
As always, I said that I would provide the lunch balance. So I'm just going to give you a little background. Last month, it was $134,000. This month, it's $133,700, so we received $300. So I just would like to remind everyone to please pay our balances. I also do know that times are tough. So we also accept donations for those of us who are a little bit more fortunate, but that's a pretty high balance in the district, so I just want to keep everyone abreast of that. And as I said, I would do that monthly. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to move Facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to move Programs.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to move Students.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to move Personnel.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion.
Second. Please sign in and state your name and, oh, all in favor? Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm going to start with board comments, and we'll start down at the end with Mr. McCarron.
Just wanted to thank everybody involved with moving all the schools around, having a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting and hearing all the work that everybody did. There was so much involved with it, and everybody put their best hats on and got it all done. Appreciate everybody's hard work on that. Also, just...
Also, just wanted to thank Jeannie for everything. I know it's your last meeting, so I just wanted to thank you for, for everything with our meetings. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and joining us livestream and the presentations. You know, thank you, Jeannie, for all your hard work as well, and everyone have a wonderful rest of the summer.
I wanted to echo what Mr. McCarron said. It seemed like with the move, you know, just thank everyone for, you know, putting 110% in and getting everything squared away so our kids could start off the year, you know, really coming together. And I know our fall sports are already starting up over the summer and so far, I'm hearing some really great stories, so that makes me really happy. Also wanted to, well, Jeannie, it's not a meeting without you, so thank you so much for all that you've done and, and thanks for everyone who is, came out to hear us. Thanks.
I echo everybody. We'll have to have a bobblehead, Jeannie, just for August and like a few more just to get us through. I also just wanted to say, you know, I noticed a lot of the candidates for governor are making the rounds around locally. And if anybody ever, you know, is in the position to speak to any of the candidates, they should absolutely ask about what some of the changes they'll make for school funding, especially when expenditures are higher than what the revenue is of the town. And if you ever get that chance, if you could email us and let us know what the response is, we would love to hear it. And thank you for supporting our students and our school district.
I just want to echo all the sentiments for all the help and everything with getting the schools transitioned. It seems to be going very well, so that is wonderful. So kudos to the team. Again, Jeannie, thank you for everything that you've done. It's been a pleasure for the past couple of years, so we wish you the best new journey. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody like a great rest of the summer. It's, it's moving quick, so have a great night. Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By acclamation.
Aye.